Yeah, sad deal. Sad deal. Both those guys.
No, just about to start.
Yeah, I mean, both of them had it knocked down and invaded. Yeah, it was pretty significant. Pretty significant. But one will probably make a real good recovery and the other one may actually die. It's that critical. Infection and all sorts of stuff.
Are you there right now?
You lose a lot, yeah. Anyways, yeah. Yeah. Sad deal. How are you doing?
We should get good.
Summer to be over, you might think.
Yes.
It's too hot.
So they do have, they do have TMO.
Too hot, too dry.
Yeah.
I heard about fire.
Yeah, I'm loving the, uh, loving the rain.
I think you're gonna have to talk to Adam or I don't know if I'm gonna stall up. Sorry, sweetie. I'll be avoiding the camera today. The agreement regarding building and regarding. Anyway, we, we are due to have a real meeting over there. I thought you'd leave, so I sent it over to John. Anyway, I just thought you, since you're on the floor, you. Did I get this by you?
Oh, the Henry.
So, so of course, this is just a. I was, uh. Well, we used to have.
I got caught out in that.
I don't know. It might still be around.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah. 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 I'm so sorry, Addison, I was calling. Contact here.
Not so much today, just to make it to this point. It feels like. This sounds like relaxing. It's good to sit down and take a little. To give you a larger story.
No, this sounds really bad. I took like a weekend.
It's not late.
It's very sound. Somebody can't get off their whole. It's not. So we won't let. So just, are you serious? I'll let you finish.
Yeah.
It's definitely really quite disturbing. People next to us. Shit, trying to get him.
Well, this is my work. I wait for the time. School. This way. Get it. How are you?
Just gratifying. Thanks, man. Sounds like a lot of work. Well, the chairs just for tonight, we'll see how I do. If I don't park in the ditch. Some distance between us, Mr. Clapper.
Ruth, have you heard? Is Patrick Trim confirming he's coming to tonight?
He's, he said he wasn't sure he was gonna be here or not. He was planning on it, but he wasn't.
If he's not here, we think. He's not here today. Maybe what we could do, if he's not here, we'll just wait until there's a time when he's here and if he's a non-council member.
Yeah, maybe.
I think I'm.
If he's still around, yeah.
I think he's, I don't think he's moving entirely. I think he's gonna keep a plan here and go back and forth. We'll probably just do that.
Did you want to use those light things? We figured out that.
Did you read any of the reports?
It's only on one of those. We figured out why it's.
I like them.
Do you? So they interfere. Okay, we don't have a problem. No, no one can.
That's okay. Okay. Okay, it's four o'clock. Not on our clock, but on my iPhone, so we'll go with the iPhone. Before we conduct our business at Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District, Andy Smith, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at four o'clock Tuesday, August 21st. Do we have any citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Okay. Motion by Greg Halliday, do we have a second?
I'm getting there, but I think I will second it.
Second made by Jaylen Hawks. Do we have any discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes from July 18th, 2018?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, four to zero. Do we have any bills today? Yes, we do. Let's see. Yeah. Entertain a motion to pay our bills as the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Administrative Control Board.
I make a motion to approve the bills for $665.76 with total bills and payroll coming to $665.76.
Okay. Motion made by Evan Clapper, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Halliday, any discussion? See none, all in favor of the motion to pay our bills at 665.76.
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Mr. Halliday.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes, four to zero. Next, we have the Fire Chief's report by Chief Markham.
Recent incidents, seeing we've had a couple of motor vehicle accidents in the interstate, fresh fires, I don't know, discussed last time, we did have a gas front that's going up there. City flat, we want to ask our heavy end. Both ourselves, Moore Valley and Moore Valley Park. As far as equipment goes, it's all on the rolling stock that folks are right now. Admin, we get to our insurance, we're for this topic, we'll be renewed this summer. As far as the lard side, can I go to the lard side now?
Sure.
Shall I ask those questions for the chief?
Any questions? No questions.
Good. Well, after today might change a little bit, but I was gonna say the fire danger being very high in extreme is still, we're not on those planes. Fire somebody's likely to strike, so we are there, the fire restrictions are remaining place, but they go, you know, power to be, we'll repeat those. Fires were had, multiple lightning strike fires in the book close to the south. They have been being protected early and suppressed. People suppression, open these aircraft. I had one on the BLM that was up to the book close and it was about two, three acres and we just ended it with everything. We actually had similar like near tankers. Being very aggressive. The Bear Trap fire that's up on the BIA in book close is about 10,000 acres plus, 600 of that is on the BLM, the BLM is kind of working out the BIA. Again, they just got hit by really hard, so that's a good thing for putting that fire out. Just want to mention that I did attend the general services of the fire chief after check yesterday. Honored him, you know, pretty intense, intense day. See, all, I haven't set it up, one of the main positions in the airport, my last day of morning would be next, uh, next Thursday. You know, some time with my family, pick up a couple of things. Great.
Thank you for your report. Any questions for the fire ward?
I have a question. On the, uh, the explosion and fire out at Day's Flats, can you let us know how many people were injured and, and how serious they were?
Yeah, there were two people, and I think it's why they reported that they were seriously injured, but.
Okay.
They were, uh, Moore Valley was there first, Aaron, that was in ours, was right behind, our captain, I was all right, and then the helicopters.
Yeah, I was concerned that a lot of people didn't know about, know, know about that explosion out there. It was pretty, pretty serious and so.
Yeah. Last time nobody got hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, do we have a replacement warden?
No, so we have a side him. We try to do things, lourds from the other counties, failing.
Okay.
We still have a lot of veterans.
And are you staying on as chief?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, great. Don't scare me like that.
Yeah. Still molten fire, just.
Great. Well, thanks for everything you're doing up there.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any new business, old business, or future considerations? Okay, see none, I would accept an emotion to close this meeting.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Evan Clapper, second by Councilman Halliday, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That meeting is closed and we'll call the Grand County Council regular meeting to order at 4:07 PM. In attendance, Councilman Halliday, Councilwoman Hawks, Councilman Clapper, Councilman Wells. We already did the pledge. Approval of minutes.
Mr. President, Mr. Chair.
Do we have, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 16th, June 5th, June 12th, June 19th, July 3rd, and July 3rd, 2018.
Okay.
Second.
Motion seconded by Evan Clapper, discussion?
Yes. But it takes a minute to get there. Okay, so no changes on May 16th, that was the special meeting at the Grand Center. On the June 5th, minutes, payment of bills, ratification of payment of bills, it looks like the amounts are slightly off. I believe it totals to $2,073,931.51, so it's, you know, off by maybe 42 cents, but we do want to correct in our minutes. And then in that same paragraph, for the financials motion, the, the last sentence at the very end, carried by roll, dash nine, all, that should be obviously roll call, roll call. Then down in the general council reports, it reports that I attended the Health District Board meeting. That really makes it sound like I went to the Public Health District Board meeting. I'm not on that board, so Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District Board meeting would be more accurate. That's all the changes I have in that one. Anyone else? Okay.
So just to clarify, we've got a motion to adopt the minutes, May 16th through July 3rd, first, and then we can.
Then we'll do as amended. Okay, then on item M, I'm, I'm just not clear that that's the motion that we actually made approving, okay, a motion by Evan Clapper to approve 6,000 for contracting out terminal cleaning and water sewage treatment and monitoring. That may have just been water sewage treatment because we're not gonna get cleaning in there for $6,000. What does everyone else recollect?
That sounds correct.
Okay. And now I'm on June 5th agenda. Oh, wait. Must have gone backwards, sorry. Um, nothing, no changes on June 12th, no changes on June 19th. However, on, take that back, June 19th, regular meeting agenda, towards the end. Item FF, the statement that it credits me with making, I believe I misquoted, Councilmember Jaylen Hawks noted that several years ago, council members voted against a, provided a COLA to elected officials because they could have waited, they were just taking care of staff. That's not, I don't think that's what I said, if it is, it doesn't sound like what I said. It's not even what I thought.
Okay.
And I, I think we actually did vote that, you know, we voted that raise in, Diana? I thought the motion carried, so. Yes, no?
This was a public hearing.
Right, but it said that several years ago, the motion didn't carry, and I believe it did, so I wouldn't have said that. Anyway, if you would just research that one, that would be great.
Okay.
Um, perhaps one last one. Oh, yeah, it's got a closed session listed for the same purpose. Did we have two closed sessions a minute apart at that meeting with the same purpose? Reasonably imminent litigation?
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, there was two.
Okay.
Back and back, yeah.
Okay. And on July 3rd, first motion, Patrick Trim is, spelled Pat, well, Patrick spelled wrong and then Trim is Tim, so just that minor correction. Um, July 3rd, not seeing, and that's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from May 16th to July 3rd with the discussed amendments?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, five to zero. I would entertain a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes, July 18th through August 7th.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Evan Clapper.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Halliday, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to the ratification of the payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the county bills totaling $1,215,811.92 and total payroll totaling $225,855.13 for a total of bills and payroll for $1,441,667.05. Okay.
Motion made by Councilman Clapper, do we have, second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Halliday, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, excuse me. Still got the training wheels on. Councilmember Halliday?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hawks?
Yes.
Councilmember Clapper?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Paxton?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, five to zero. General Counsel reports and future considerations, we'll start with Councilmember Halliday.
Okay, uh, attended the Transportation Special Service District. We had moved that from Tuesday to Wednesday because we had a private audit done and they were, wanted to give the results of the private audit on Wednesday, so I attended that. Came back, suggestions, they gave us some, some better ideas to be in compliance with state law. They didn't really find anything seriously wrong, so it was just a matter of doing things a little bit different. Transportation Special Service District, they felt was doing a good job, just a little bit of tweaking here and there. We have two vacancies currently and one of those vacancies was the chair, who has recently terminated his, uh, his volunteerism in, on that board, so we're looking for two, uh, two people to fill vacancies there. The next one I attended was the museum board. Because of the Transportation Special Service District impinged on the museum board, I was not able to stay for the whole museum board, but, uh, Councilmember Kurt Wells was there and he was able to pick up and he'll, he'll fill in the rest of the council on what happened there. Go on to the Moab Area Housing Task Force, we discussed investors and capital gains taxes, opportunity zones, we're gonna put out a forum letter to support high-density overlays in that area. Today, at 11 o'clock, I attended, uh, the closing of the Castle Valley Fire District, had put in a request for money from the CIB, they got a grant for that, with that grant, they bought five acres out in Castle Valley that has a high-volume irrigation well currently on it, which will meet the, the water needs of the Castle Valley Fire Department, so that worked out really well, especially since it was a grant, it was not a loan, so that was excellent. Wanted to thank the, the CIB for, for giving the Castle Valley Fire District that money so they were able to close on that. So that was done today. Also to go on, up in the Thompson area, they, we had done some, uh, there was a request to expand the RV park up there, which we did, and that meant that the, that area would be a highway commercial zoning for that RV park. When I checked on it later on, it had not been done. I stopped by, um, the community planning office and, uh, asked them about it, they felt like they'd kind of fallen through the cracks, so they got on and, uh, and corrected that. So that RV park now should be listed as a highway commercial instead of range grazing. So that was, that was good. The Thompson Special Service District Water Board, I was not able to attend because I had to, uh, take my wife to, uh, some medical treatment in Grand Junction. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Halliday. Councilmember Hawks?
Okay, ongoing item, I attended the Budget Advisory Board meeting last week. We went over, um, a funding request from a nonprofit, Old Spanish Trail Arena Recreation Complex budget, the courthouse, county maintenance and Star Hall budgets, senior citizens and community center, treasurer's budget, the audit budget, and the elections budget. And, meeting again tomorrow to go over, looked at, I briefly looked at the agenda, but it's 200 pages in the packet, so I'll have some reading to do tonight. Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah, then, the Moab Area Community Land Trust gives a report as part of that board, as I've mentioned before, they have acquired another donation of four acres of land, which sounds like it's contiguous to the 38 acres at a Royal Crossing that they already have, and they're hoping that that will give them access to the highway, so that might alleviate some of the, um, concerns with the last proposal on that land. Land Trust is still looking for a few board members. Now, that same meeting, city council reported that they have purchased part of Walnut Lane, and I'm sure everybody saw that in the paper, it's a long process, but in the end, it will add workforce and affordable housing. Travel Council will hold a special meeting on August 28th at 3:00 PM in these chambers to review their budget and approve it, and the next day, they will be presenting that budget to the Budget Advisory Board on August 29th at 8:30. My understanding is we have six applications for two positions on that board. The Budget Advisory Board will be interviewing those applicants on September 4th.
You mean the Travel Council Board?
What did I say? Budget advisor, yeah, we will not be interviewing those candidates. Thank you. I attended the Planning Commission for Mary and/or Evan. Are you still on that?
No.
Okay, Mary.
Cemetery.
Okay. Attended that for Mary, it was basically a workshop on the proposed high-density overlay zone. And I went to a Four Corners Behavioral Health Board Retreat, part of that retreat, well, it's always impressive the way that director does her retreats. The last two I've been to, including this one, they've had our three state representatives, well, our two state representatives and our senator at that, and it's, it's very nice to be able to build relationships with them and, and know that they are aware of issues that we're facing. A lot of it was on opioid overdose. And the thing that I would take away from that, kind of sums it up, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover, but it takes a lot of funding, a lot of time to carry that out. Suicide Prevention Coordinator also spoke and told us about her efforts in that area. She had this acronym HOPE, H-O-P-E, which stands for Hold On Pain Ends. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Clapper?
Thank you. I also attended the Budget Advisory Board, and just to, uh, tag on to Jaylen's report, this year, the budgeting process is going very thoroughly.
Are you still on that?
No.
Okay. Mary.
Cemetery.
Okay. Attended that for Mary. It was basically a workshop on the proposed high-density overlay zone. And I went to a Four Corners Behavioral Health Board Retreat. Part of that retreat, well, it's always impressive the way that Director does her retreats. The last two I've been to, including this one, they've had our three state representatives, well, our two state representatives and our Senator at that, and it's very nice to be able to build relationships with them and know that they are aware of issues that we're facing. A lot of it was on opioid overdose. And the thing that I would take away from that, kind of sums it up, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover, but it takes a lot of funding, a lot of time to carry that out. Suicide Prevention Coordinator also spoke and told us about her efforts in that area. She had this acronym HOPE, H-O-P-E, which stands for Hold On Pain Ends. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Clapper?
Thank you. I also attended the Budget Advisory Board, and just to tag on to Jaylen's report, this year, the budgeting process is going very thoroughly, and I think a lot of the goals of creating the board are being met. And there was some questions around if, once the advisory sends their recommendations onto the council, how much of that process will need to be repeated. And I feel pretty strongly that the board is coming up with really good recommendations. And so I'd encourage everyone to maybe take some time at their leisure before we get the recommendation to familiarize yourselves with the process of how it's working and some of the analytics that are being used. And as always, the minutes are always available. So rather than going through the whole process twice, it'd be nice if we all played an active role with that as it's coming through. And that being said, not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday, I will be unable to attend, and if anybody would like to cover for me, Jaylen will be there, so we will have representation. But that meeting is at 9:00 and typically runs...
8:30.
Oh, sorry, 8:30. And typically runs a couple hours at least, if not close to noon. So it's open, it's here, you're welcome to have a seat at the table.
The 29th meeting won't be in here because of Board of Equalization hearings instead, so it's been moved to the library. We haven't got that word out to you guys yet, but library, the small conference room though, in the back.
Thank you. I also attended the Grand County Cemetery Maintenance District Board Meeting, and there was a motion to move ahead with purchasing some sprinklers that will have water conservation, just like everywhere else in the county, they're struggling with water this year, and they are running off like 40-year-old sprinkler heads. And so they're making a move towards conservation, which I think is very commendable and appreciative of them for making that, that move to transition, so. And then I also attended the Trail Mix Committee, and one of the things that came up there was CNHA, the Canyonlands National History Association, is a nonprofit that has been covering the bookkeeping for Trail Mix. It's a way for Trail Mix to be able to accept donations from private members and use that in their operating funds, but it's outside of CNHA's bandwidth to be able to continue to provide that bookkeeping service. And so there was a lot of talk of where to house Trail Mix's financials, and the thing that folks seem to be leaning towards is because all of Trail Mix's assets are county-owned, that it would make sense to bring them into the county fold and assist them with bookkeeping through the county, which could possibly mean having Trail Mix's full-time employees become county employees. So that's a future consideration, just want to put that on your radar. They did get the truck, so they're psyched on that, and that's going to be a great tool for maintaining our investment in the trails of Grand County.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yes.
Sorry.
Please.
Trail Mix does not have full-time employees?
Oh, sorry, they're employees. They have two paid employees, and the rest are all volunteered. So there's a question of where they will live. Not literally, but...
How's, huh?
Yes.
Not literally.
I also attended the Grand County Emergency Medical Service Special Service District Meeting. There's a lot of specials and services. There's a lot for them to get going on with the prepping for the end of the year. One of the things that we've run into on the board that is another future consideration for us all to be aware of is that the Director, who is in the room, is currently wearing two hats as trying to launch the Special Service District as well as working as a county employee. There are some, so he's basically got two sets of bosses. There was some look at having him start with the Special Service District before it was fully up and running, but Special Service District, A, doesn't have any funds, and B, he's, would still need to supervise county employees, so that didn't really make sense. But much of the work that he's doing in the transition requires him to go beyond the scope of his current job description and authority, and it's really crucial to the success of the new district that he be able to perform those tasks for the board without any concern of overstepping his role as a county employee. And so it's kind of looking for a head nod from the council that we weren't concerned with him reaching out to Medicaid and applying for new numbers and setting up what the district needs while he's still a county employee. And we plan on drafting a letter and sending that along, but for his peace of mind, you know, I just want to keep everybody in the loop as a future consideration, because he's doing a lot, and I don't want to slow him down or hobble him at all.
Okay.
And I believe that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Clapper. My review starts on August 8th at the UAC Policy Committee Agenda, and that is the new structure that UAC is implemented to process legislation or originate legislation, so it's in focus groups. And so the different groups are Revenue and Taxation, next is General Government, Business and Labor, and Economic Development. The third is Criminal, Civil Justice, and Behavioral Health. Fourth is Public Lands and Public Resources, and the last being Infrastructure and Transportation. And so they just huddled and brought us up to speed on some of the activities of the interim session. Some of the highlights were Senator Hemmer working on some business property tax exemptions. Under General Government, Business, Labor, and Economic Development, we discussed the revolving loan fund, some issues with surveyors, recorders, change of county classifications, affordable housing. And then Criminal and Civil Justice and Behavioral Health took up a significant portion of the meeting. Jail reimbursement funding is a big issue, indigenous defense, some revised definitions for officer-involved critical incidents, tax credits for behavioral health, and secure detention facilities. The jail reimbursement funding, Sheriff White was there, who's also the President of the State Sheriff's Association, they spent a lot of time on that, and it's a pretty strong issue with the rural counties and rural sheriffs. On Public Lands and Resources, the only item really that we covered was Division of Wildlife Resources issues, and it was mostly in central and western Utah, and forest fire issues on state lands. And then on Infrastructure and Transportation, we covered B and C road funding update, which is always a battle and a struggle for rural counties to make sure that we're getting our fair shake of the B and C road funding as opposed to the urban counties. On August 14th, we held a cleanup committee meeting, which right now is me and Joe Kingsley, myself, Joe Kingsley, and Council Chair McGann, and starting to put some pieces together to get some junk cleanup going, get folks that are out of code. Within code, one to update is we do have a bin from, I think Pacific, I forget the other half of the business, anyways, they're a processing business and facility over in Grand Junction that processes scrap and metal, and they donated a bin that Joe Kingsley has placed on his property for people to go and drop things off that, you know, junk from their properties. And so we're, we're making some progress there in discussions with a local junk hauler, tow truck business that's interested in helping, that's done, done some work with some of the property owners that are out of code and has a relationship with them, and so trying to work out an arrangement for him to assist, so it's not just Big Brother knocking on their door, you know, with the compliance issue. So there's good progress being made there. As Councilmember Halliday mentioned, I did attend the Museum Board meeting with him. There's some really exciting things going on with our museum, and I'd have to say I was really impressed the way they held their meetings. And they've got some, their board is a, is a, is a good makeup of, you know, different, a lot of formal, formal federal employees that are interested in or worked in paleontology and archaeology and different things, and they are planning the renovation of the museum. So it'll be shutting down sometime this fall and opening back up next summer, and so they're rolling out their plans for that and, you know, discuss kind of the different sections of the museum. It's going to be a much more viewer-friendly and more sophisticated operation. They've got, I think, six to eight storage sheds full of donations they've received, you know, from locals for quite some time that they're going to be processing and putting on display, and so I'm, I am excited for that and happy that the county is supporting that. Next meeting was canceled. It was August 16th, the Water District, due to a lack of a quorum. Last Friday, the 17th, I met with District Ranger Mike Diem on the Forest Service Revision Plan Issue, and, you know, I had some anxiety as I felt like we were, you know, kind of late to the table there, but what I found is, is that they're behind on their timelines, if you can imagine that, and Bear's Ears has been a focus for them in getting those plans finalized as well as the forest fire issues they're dealing with. And so the message from them is take your time and go through the comment process, you know, properly as a county, and then just get those in when you can. I think the deadline for the draft rollout of the plan is in November, and his comment to me was he thinks they're already between, I think, one to three months behind in that. And so to comment, and I, I'll get into this on the agenda item where I'll ask for a motion to postpone that letter. The, as a cooperating agency, they have a share folder that has documents in it that we need access to to be able to comment, so really what we're commenting on is Chapter One, which is an overview of the plan that's being proposed. And they're, they're struggling to get me access to that, which is essentially a Dropbox, and so I had a phone call with the Revision Plan Team out of Price today. So we need to get access to that, which I'll make available to everyone, and then the comment sheet is actually pretty specific, and I've included that in the items that were placed on the dais, and that they want to have references to the specific sentences and verbiage in the plan. And so the good news is, I think it's good news in that we have time to work through it as a county, and Evan, you made some comments that it came up in one of your meetings, and so it just seems that the deadlines that they set, they're not holding the cooperating agencies to them, we have some time to work through this fall. So I'll probably take a first shot at comments just in that forum and make it available to everyone to review it, and then of course, if something will have to do the council and send to them, and I don't want to wait too long, but we do have some time. August 20th, which was yesterday, I attended an informational meeting on these opportunity zones that we were awarded, one of a handful in the state, and they're more or less incentives for investors to, you know, almost like, not a charitable donation, but to invest in different zones throughout the state, and there's incentives and tax incentives attached to those. And so our AOG was able to sign two of the four counties that make up our AOG, and then we, we received one of them, and Carbon County received another one. And so I attended the meeting where they just gave an introduction. Our Economic Development Director Zacharia Levine was, he was video conferenced and asked some questions, and we shared some slides and had some good discussion. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what he can do with that and bringing you all up to speed on how we can utilize that as a county. This morning, I met with Ruth just to kind of polish off that strategic plan document that we worked on in the political section, and also just to kind of revise it and then come up with a plan to finalize it. And so we'll have a, the chart that you all reviewed at the last workshop with the political components of it implemented, and then also just likely a two-page kind of mission statement, vision statement that's kind of comprehensive of all the different issues, and we'll get that adopted. And then prior to the meeting, I attended a, just a walk-through of that Rim Vista, Rim Village storm drainage issue that we had a presentation from the HOA manager at our last meeting, and I thought it was a really productive meeting. Ruth was there, Bill Jackson, the Road Department, Building Department, Zacharia was there in Planning and Zoning, we had our county contract engineer, Dave Dillman with Horox, and we're able to really understand what we feel like are some of the issues in both maintenance issues with one of the HOAs and also construction flaws, where we have some retaining ponds and things that aren't doing their job. So we're, you know, it's, it's not a county liability, it's a civil issue between those HOAs, but want to be proactive in trying to help facilitate a, you know, resolution there so that, you know, we have the storm drainage water flowing like it should. And that's all I have. Councilmember Paxman?
Mine was pretty easy this month. I don't really have anything to discuss except future considerations. Just wondered what we're going to do with Patrick's trims, assignments. If you mind picking up a couple of those for him.
We had planned to reshuffle the deck next regular meeting when Mary's here.
Okay. Perfect. That's all I have.
All right. Great. Thank you. Do we have any elected official reports? See none. Council Administrator Report?
I don't really have anything to add to what you've already said, so working on evaluations as always, so that's all I got.
Great. Thank you, Ruth. Up next is department reports. We'll hear from our IT Director, Matt Seneseros.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for taking a little bit of time to, let me talk to you a little bit. Give you an update on what's been going on for, you know, since the last time I've been up here to talk to you. We should have got a report on your dais that kind of goes over what I do here at the county and what my duties are and what I oversee. I put up there on the, on the top, the mission statement. I put this mission statement together when I first started here. This will be nine years this year that I've been here. When I first came here, I put together a simple little line that says, "Grand County Information Technology Services provides reliable, robust, integrated technology which improves the ability of the county to serve its constituency." I think that in the time that I've been here, we've certainly increased quite a bit the level of technology that's here. When I got here, it was very scattered, silos of information, disjunct systems, licensing that was not compliant, pirated licensing, all sorts of issues and pieces. I've worked through this time to really centralize a lot of that stuff, put in controls that assure business continuity, so if, if something happens, our data is actually backed up and it's in multiple locations and makes better use of the equipment that we have here, tries to put better return on investment of those things. Let you peruse through the duties and such there. Give a quick update on some of the projects that I've been doing over the last year. Big one that took a lot of time towards the end of last year and to beginning of this year, and there's still little tweaks here and there is the jail remodel. But if you haven't taken a tour of the inside of the jail, there's, it's kind of flashy. There's lots of buttons and screens, and Dispatch Center has a number of heads-up displays. Throughout all that, we had to move all of the 911 and Health Safety Operations, have a trailer that we have parked out in North Park, and on the next, Communications Tower. Have to do all that while not dropping everything. So there's quite a bit of work and stuff that went into that. We've been working on getting this new 911 system put in. Our current 911 system is getting very dated. It was installed, let's say, in 2011, 2012. The systems and such that are in there are very dated. I'm sure you've heard this story a couple of times from myself, from Rick, from Steve. It's, it's kind of a touch-and-go situation on a number of points, and we're really trying to investigate it. Right now, we're waiting on what's going to happen with Emery County and with UCA. Right now, we're waiting on what's going to happen with Emery County, with UCA, and funding, how all that plays out. Ultimately, we'd like to be able to have a system that is a regional system that fails over to our neighboring counties, to San Juan and to Emery. Currently, our current system fails back and forth to San Juan, so if we miss a call, it goes to them, and if they miss a call, it goes to us. But we're very segmented, we're a lot different in the state as far as 911 technology is concerned. We're not tied into any of the central routers like across the state, which certainly limits our ability to be able to respond to information the next-gen way. So there's, there's some work going into that. Hopefully, we should hear an answer on that in the near future. We've done a number of upgrades to our command posts as far as communication systems and networking involved with that. Installed surveillance and security systems that are number of different operations, including Airport, Family Support Center, Grand Center, and the arena. Automated PC and server Apache and compliance that takes care of a lot of security updates, not just for Windows, but for a number of applications that are in there as well, Firefox, Chrome, things that can open up us to security liabilities there. I've upgraded all the core network systems, including firewalls and routers, and that goes to all the offsite buildings. That really helps by actually bringing all the offsite buildings' networks under one under all of its all managed and secure. And that also provides the offsite buildings to be able to access the servers and such here, too. So it's a good thing to do. Been working with the GIS policy and technical committees on a number of different projects. Continuing to do various trainings and building out some on-demand security and compliance training. And that's, that type of training is going to be available to everybody in the county. There's a number of different features that are available to friends and families and that kind of stuff, too. Kind of keeps you aware of the security threats and kind of what the environment looks like. Because everybody has a email, they're all exposed to a number of different fronts, and a lot of ways you can get, get exploited. Have some other projects upcoming, mostly dealing with some of that forest system stuff, upgrading some of the networking switches, migrating our current email exchange server off to Office 365, enough to push it off into the cloud, and it will not be an on-premise situation. It helps out with redundancy, updates, but also provide a number of different instant messaging services. With that, it provides Skype and some other stuff, too. I guess we should be able to tap into a number of different video conferencing features. Won't go through all the rest of these, there's all kind of geeky stuff. I did put a note in there that at the beginning of June, I let the matter service provider that we've been using for the last couple of years, Valcom, I let them go because they were not cutting, geez, whatever you want to call it, they were not doing their job. We, we had an agreement in place that they're supposed to be taking care of a number of backend systems, making sure that things are patched. They consistently failed on, on that front a number of occasions. Leads me to the point that I was having to do it, got to the point that I was doing it anyway, so rather than continue to day them, we're done. It's been the same for the last seven months. I will note in there that by doing that, it leaves me with no immediate backup, so if there's, you know, something that goes down, you know, it's, it's me, I've got support agreements on all four systems. So there is some backups on those type of things, but for me to be able to actually take some time off in terms of fall months is kind of a loss. But I do, you know, note that the users that we have at the right now have support about 180 to 190 of them. They're, they're pretty computer savvy, for the most part. People tend to be able to report stuff and take care of things, and they do make sure that they're allowing those updates and pieces to happen, so everything's relatively stable. So it's, it's a good thing to have users that are like that. But, you know, there's constantly an upgraded demand for technology solutions that are happening. Security threats and things that are out in the world are getting more and more, and they're constantly in our base. And so with that, I'm going to go back out and either going back and forth on whether I need to hire another MSP, another matter service provider, or if I need to come and never tell you guys that I really need to have an assistant. I came to the budget last year and asked for one, it did not end up in my budget. I'm going to have a couple of budget ideas you're holding up. I'll have a bit more of a sure answer for you and a couple of options on that. But it's, there's a lot that's on my calendar, making sure that it's the sure of it. Noted a couple of different things there. I've been hosting a high school intern, I've had a total of pre-trimesters, and in the last year, I wanted to have two trimesters of it. They've been fun to have, they've been helping me out with, you know, getting systems ready to recycle, getting the systems out, instead of teaching the kids, you know, some of the old computer stuff that are out in the world. So firewalls, jail, GIS, replaced about 40 workstations so far, and put an average there of about 18, helped us a day. That's an average, some days it's as high as 40, 45, some days it's a handful. But it certainly keeps me busy. It's always something different every day. As I said, feel free to, you know, look through it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's an excellent report. I don't know that the council knows what much of this means.
Sorry. I tried to turn down the volume.
No. No, it is an excellent report. Any questions for Matt?
Just refresh my memory, when you were asking for a new position, do you do have that job description approved?
We did put a job description together last year, and you guys did approve it. And it's, it's kind of a bit of a mashup. And part of the problem I have with coming to you and saying, yeah, I need a full-time IT person, is that, you know, it goes up and down, you know? I can't necessarily say that I have enough full-time work for somebody, but that's part seven to have somebody on, and sure, find all sorts of different parts and just learn this to do. But the position I did put out was a mix of IT and GIS work, because there is certainly a much more, a higher demand for GIS pieces that are coming out. And then there, it's more of a general GIS, more of a backend administration type of GIS, versus what Zacharia and his office has been doing, where they're actively out there doing analysis and that sort of thing. Just be much more backend, making sure that systems are updated, layers are populated correctly. We'll work back and forth with literacy management, but some of those type of things. But yeah, there is a job description.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt? Thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
I know you're doing a lot.
That's right. It's a fun job.
People put plugs in for you all the time at Budget Advisory Board Meetings.
They would.
They put plugs in for your IT department.
Oh, I know. I was going to say, you can ask anyone out of the department that's around here, they always say, they can tell.
Yeah.
It's true.
I try to make, make do with this.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
I could just say, I really don't know what we did without him. He, we didn't have any IT staff person before Matt, so he's really made this happen.
That's amazing.
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate it. He took my calls when I, when he was on vacation, my email crashed, so anybody that can help me out in that instance is good. Okay, we have no agency reports. Do we have any citizens to be heard? What are the rules? Come on up. What are the rules again, remind me on citizens to be heard?
Do you mean rules?
Three minutes, but I need a little bit more.
Yeah, and they're supposed to fill out a card.
It's at the chair's discretion. Citizens to be heard, they don't need to fill out a card.
Okay.
As long as it's not on the agenda, that's what this question is for.
Okay, so this is an item that's not on the agenda. That's, that's right. That's what I was looking for. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Adkison, I've been a longtime resident of Moab, Utah. I was raised here, left for a while, came back about four years ago, and got back interested in the Moab-Utah project. I was the controller back in the early 80s for Lisbon Mining, we allow them out here. And I worked arm-in-arm with Bob Patterson, who was responsible for the reclamation plan, NRC reclamation plan for the Lisbon mine. So I know, I know quite a bit about uranium and what's, has to happen, like the NRC changes, back in those days, it would change, the cover needs to be two-foot, and they'd come back and say it needs to be four-foot, it needs to be six-foot. So we would react, because we had to book a reclamation cost on our, on our books for accounting purposes as a liability. So I got involved in this back in, before 2000, it's probably when Price Waterhouse Coopers took over as the bankruptcy trustee after Atlas Marine Bankrupt. And we spent $550 million to move, they say, nine million tons of material, and roughly, it's about $70 to $80 a tonne to move that. And conservatively, in the mining industry, you can drill, blast, truck to the mill, run it through the mill, put it out to tails for about $10 to $11 a tonne. We're paying $80 a tonne for this, and we're asking for more money, so we asked for another $10 million. And out of the last stakeholders' meeting, Russell McAllister, I was raised to be nice, okay? But I've been nice with the Department of Energy for about six years, trying to get information. I have filed probably 30 FOIA's Freedom of Information Act requests. They come back with all these exemptions, we can't give this to you, we can't give this to you. So I went to DC and talked to the Third in Command of Environmental Management, and they finally got ahold of Russell McAllister and said, let this guy talk. So I did get a meeting back on July 18th, and I want to pass on to Mary McGann, thank you for mentioning it, that we did have that meeting. It was brutal, it started off really bad right from the get-go. But I did receive a letter from Russell McAllister saying they're interested in hearing what I have to say, but it's called a unsolicited proposal. However, funding unsolicited proposals is considered a non-competitive action, and DOE is under no obligation to fund a meritorious proposal due to funding limitations or other program priorities. Okay? So I sent this to you all and to Mary, saying I need some funding. If I can get some funding, then maybe I can put this together, okay? But I've been checking around since I sent that to you all. This, this basically, they just humored me with this letter. They, they shut me up. They said, because when you go out to that website and you look for what you got to do to file this proposal, it's, it's enormous. You got to say, I mean, I mean, it's enormous. If you go out and look at it, it's just a real big job, okay? Which leads me to, there's a summit that's going to be held in Henderson, Nevada, on September 4th and 6th. It's called the Rad Waste Summit, okay? I didn't come forward because I was so upset over this meeting, but then I got an email that said, please come and see us, because we've got Ann White, the Assistant Secretary of Environmental Management of the Department of Energy, is going to be the keynote speaker. Okay? So I thought, hey, all these companies, of which Portage, Northwind is not one of them, the Energy Solutions, the people that had our first five-year contract are going to be there, Pro Two Serve, which is one of our subs, is going to be there, and several others, okay? So here, perspectives from senior management, Department of Energy. Top officials with the Department of Energy will discuss the recently passed, still pending fiscal 2019 $6.6 billion budget. Moab is $35 to $38 to $40 million of $6.6 billion. But yet, we are worried about 40 million people that are downriver of us. And we're letting this thing drag out and drag out and drag out now until 2034. So here's what they're talking about. Then, the NRC, Nuclear Regulatory Commission, is going to talk about what they're doing to help things like this along. And then there's going to be a new approach to ultimate disposition of DOE's radioactive waste. They want to hear from stakeholders. What, what do you guys, the stakeholders, want to do to help get rid of this waste? Then they're going to have a networking session. That's when you can talk to the people that are in charge of what gets done at the lower level of DOE. Continuing role of DOE Labs. This session will discuss new research and technologies in radioactive waste management. And then you get the state and local involvement. Officials from state and local governments will discuss their role in determining how radioactive waste is managed. So I think it'd be good to have somebody go to it. I'd like to go to it, but it's expensive, so I'd like to just leave this with you, Mr. Chairman. If you want to have somebody go to it, that would be great. I do get a, a special coupon, because I am a subscriber to the Rad Waste publication, so I get a $200 discount off of that.
Okay.
Can I have a few more minutes?
Sure. You're, you're at almost four, so.
Okay. Well.
But you've been, you've.
Respectfully, Dr. Rousher ran it for about 15 minutes.
No, I'm not cutting you off. Go ahead.
Michael Lish did, okay? So in the, in the minutes of the last stakeholders' meeting, Russell McAllister is quoted as, or is mentioned, saying that if we get additional funding, which as far as I know, the $10 million is what we're asking for, if you, we would need 15 to 20 more people. So if you take 20 people, times $20, giving a rough number for, for the wage, times 2,080 hours, times 1.6, I put six in there for the benefits, gentlemen, is that about right? 60% for benefits? A little high? Okay? So of the $10 million, we're talking about 1.3 million in wages out of the $10 million. But yet, we're going to move from two to four trainings, which is double what we're doing now. We're paying $80 a tonne to move that at $38 to $39 million, but yet, we're going to be able to do it with $10 million, double the, double the tonnage? It doesn't add up, okay? I put in a FOIA, asking, why do we have 26 people working on the Moab project, living in Grand Junction, Colorado? And I said, are they doing other things? They came back and said, no, they're only on the Moab-Utah project. I said, doesn't it make more sense that they live in Moab, where the project is? They came back, they said, we do, we don't have to answer questions usually, but we're going to do this. And I was going to stay quiet, but now, since they've pushed me on, we don't think we can get qualified people in Moab, Utah, and it's too expensive to live in Moab, Utah. So they have 26 people that when they do come, which is about once a week, they come over, they drive, they go back, they drive, they go back, okay? The other thing is, are you aware that some of the, one of the contractor's employees got fired for falsifying safety records back in May? The DOE is going to have a better oversight, a more, let's see, what's the word? A more stringent oversight on this project because, because of those kinds of things.
You know what I'm going to suggest, sir, is I'd be interested in following up and sitting down with you and spending some more time on the subject, and I think it would be good to have Council Chair McGann there, since this has been her assignment. But you, you've raised some interesting points, and some that I'd personally be interested in following up with you on.
Right.
So if it's all right with you, I'd like to proceed that way, and we can continue discussing some of these issues you've raised, and appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts.
Okay, what do you think about going, you ought to send either Russ or me or?
Yeah, that, that's something we should discuss, and you're willing to leave that with us?
Yeah, but it's got to be decided here in the next couple of days.
They have a nice website, too.
Okay, great.
Let's see, what was the other? The other thing is, is I'd like to give a presentation in, say, October. If I go to that, I'd like to do it, even if I don't go, I'd like to give a presentation on the idea, because, you know, I wanted to monetize the ideas I have, but it's not going to happen. I just want to see us get this out of there a lot quicker than I'm doing. It's ridiculous, it's, it's.
We have a shared interest and goal there, so appreciate your time, and we'll be in touch.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens to be heard? Okay, we'll move on to. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. We do have a plaque here for Councilmember Trimble, I think we'll postpone that until we can get him in person. So we'll move on to general business, unless, do we have any other presentations? No? We'll move on to general business and action items. Item K, approving proposed new job description for Recreation Technician III, which is a Grade XI at Sand Flats Recreation Area, presented by Andrea Brand, our Sand Flats Recreation Area Director, and John West, our Human Resources Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring this to your attention. Pretty much, I'll just go through the background briefly. Our visitation has increased 26% in the last three years. And so we have been, you know, along with various challenges, maintenance and day-to-day challenges and keeping up our facilities and our trails. And back in, when I go to the rack board for fee increase, I have to go to the federal government and I have to go to, to the county, of course, to increase fees at Sand Flats. And so part of that process is to write a business plan. And in that business plan that I wrote up in 2015, we could see that the expenses in increasing the fees, a percentage of that would go to some more additional staffing to keep up with our needs as far as maintenance and facility improvements as well. And then also, when we did our land use, visitor services and land use survey in 2014 through 2016, we were rated very high in customer service and in our facilities, good to excellent, and in customer service, excellent. And to keep that level of service for our visitors and to take care of the area, we need to add another position. And so I'm coming to you today to ask for another position at Sand Flats. This would be a permanent position, so we would have four of us, but this position would have a greater emphasis on maintenance and facility improvements.
Thank you. And John, what we have here is just for the job description, correct?
Job description is here, correct? So this year, she's not asking for any additional money. Additional money will come in the budget, in the form of the budget.
Yeah.
So what she's asking for is approval of this job description. And there's been some staffing deductions that we can go ahead and pay for this, it won't be any additional money or anything, we can have the budget for this year, or we can reuse existing funding to do that.
Okay.
But you will come back for 2019.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Hawks?
Make a motion, please. Before I do, I'll just add that this is one of my favorite organizations. I think it's a great public, public, public partnership. And I love that your budget is self-sustaining. And with that preface, I move to approve the proposed new job description for Recreation Technician III at Grade XI at Sand Flats Recreation Area and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Hawks. Second by Councilmember Paxman. Any discussion? Seen and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, item L, adopting proposed resolution approving Tavira Minor Record Survey located at 2884 Rimrock Road, presented by Zachariah Levine, our Community and Economic Development Director.
Okay, so we've got three subdivisions here on the agenda today. This is the first, this is a minor record survey, this is a one-time expeditious processing of a small lot subdivision, meaning few lots, so minor record surveys are allowed one time, as I said. Once they're used, then the developer has to go through a whole subdivision process. But in this case, the subdivision in question meets the requirements, and so what the owner is requesting is to split one lot into two lots. So first parcel would be 1.75 acres, the second parcel would be 1.01 acres. The zoning is rural residential, this is in the Rimrock Road area, so it meets the requirements of the Land Use Code, it's surrounded by rural residential, so it meets the character of the neighborhood as well. The only really important consideration on this subdivision is that there are some 30% slopes on the property, and there's a drainage channel that runs through the property. And so when this gets reported, we're going to ensure that the plat shows where the building envelope is. It's a requirement of our Land Use Code, but we have started to get into the practice of asking developers to show building envelopes so that they stay away from those 30% slopes. And the developers are very willing to do that, and we want to make sure that drainage channel is protected from development in there so that we don't adversely affect drainage in that area. So, yeah, in this case, it's met all the requirements of the code, the review agencies have also reviewed it.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Clapper?
I move to adopt the proposed resolution approving Tavira Minor Record Survey located at 33884 Rimrock Road. Drive and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Councilmember Clapper. Do we have a second? Second made by Councilmember Paxman. Any discussion? Councilmember Hawks?
I just noticed number four, drainage improvements. The finding has several question marks. The county's contract engineer has reviewed the plat and question mark recommends approval question mark. Just wondering what that's about.
That's a problematic error, perhaps.
It's page 26 of our packet that helps.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a problematic error or not, that the issue has interrupted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not sure about the issue.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have one thing. The address is showing up in some places at 2884 as opposed to 3884. Could you clarify?
My staff report it's 2884.
So the motion was 3884.
Just an error in the motion statement?
Yeah. It should be 2884.
So is the motion, okay? Still stand with the, or the motion still standing with that amendment? Clapper?
Yes.
Okay.
With the amendment for 2884.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seen and all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes unanimous, five to zero. Thank you, Zachariah. Up next, with Zachariah, we have item M, adopting proposed resolution approving the Watchman Estates final plat located off East Bench Road.
Okay, so this is a final plat approval for a two-lot subdivision in the smaller residential zoning district on East Bench Road, out of the hall course. And the surrounding zoning districts and land uses are rural residential, small lot residential as well, but aside from the hall courses, it's residential uses allocated. This application was essentially ready for final plat approval about a year ago, but the developer chose to start working on the required public improvements rather than bonding for those, going through final plat approval and, you know, recording the subdivision. And the public improvements have all been, all but a couple of items been completed. And so prior to recordation, we'll make sure that all of the bonding accurately reflects the current status of the required public improvements, as is noted in the staff report. But staff thought it was definitely ready for final plat approval, just working on one last head wall and drainage system, or drainage sewer system. And, and so, you know, all of the agencies have reviewed this plat, say it's ready to go per final approval, and make sure that the bonding is in place, either for at 125% of the value of the incomplete and not yet accepted infrastructure, like I said, the vast majority of the infrastructure is in place, and, you know, what we will bond for is just 10% of the replacement cost of that. And so that is all per state code. You'll be seeing actually an amendment to our Land Use Code to clarify this whole process and make sure that it aligns with state code here very soon. But suffice it to say that the applicant has met all of the county standards, and he's ready for final plat approval. You know, like I said, we'll just make sure that recordation under final plat, which enables the developer to start selling lots and getting building permits for individual lots, and all that will happen once we ensure that the bonding in place is definitely accurate as per the UTE's approval.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Entertainer motion.
I'm the developer, and I'm asking a question.
You know what? Let's get a motion on the floor then during discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Paxman?
Move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the Watchman Estates final plat located off East Bench Road and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Okay. Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Paxman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clapper. Discussion, go ahead, sir.
Zachariah, maybe you said that, that I would request that the requirement for that 125% bond, the work is 98% complete, 98% paid for. It saves a lot of red tape if you didn't have to go to the regular hold of the 125% bond for the remaining $2,000. Is that what you, I think maybe you said that. So that 125% is only for any infrastructure that's not yet complete and approved by our engineer. It's not for all of the infrastructure. All of the infrastructure that's complete and inspected and approved by our county engineer, you only bond for 10% of that. Right, I'm having 10% of our, but there's a tiny bit remaining. Well, that's, that is, we're simply following state code in that regard. I understand that. So it's just a function of, if you want to record, then that's what you have to do. It's already been paid for, and I will, if you require that, then I will have to put up the money that you have, 125% of, for those things that have been required, those remaining. And I, that will take a lot of time, and it'll take a lot of time for me to get that back. If that could be waived, I would agree. Is state code superseding here? You know, it's all spelled out in state code, so if you want to record, that's what you have to follow. And I'll be waiting for it. I would not advise waiving it, nor do I know whether it could be waived. Okay, that says a lot of red tape for something, but the work will be completed by the time we get the paperwork in place. Well, then, well, I would, my advice to you would be to finish the work and then You're getting your final plat approval today, you're not getting your recordation of your lots. And so you can complete the work and, and then you won't have to bond that 125%. You would just bond the 10%, but you can't record until then. Good. And as you said in an email yesterday, it ties us buddy, I have people who want to purchase the lots and start construction. I understand that. I don't think it's necessary red tape, but I will... That's set forth in state code, and it's primarily to protect the county, because as much as, you know, we love to take your word that, you know, you're financially viable and we've got people that want to purchase lots, you know? We don't have any way to verify that, and the county can't be on the hook for complete infrastructure. I put out close to $1 million, why would I not put in $50,000?
It, well, it sounds like if it's, if it's state statute, we don't have the flexibility to waive it as the legislative body.
State statute allows the county to impose that.
Okay.
And that goes to county on that.
Zachariah, can you remind me of the order of operations?
What's that?
Could you remind me of the order of operations with the, does the approval of the final plat?
So here's, here's how it works according to state code. When a subdivision is proposed, the subdivision has to make required public improvements. So these are, you know, roads, sidewalks, sewer, water, drainage, that sort of thing. And the developer has the option to either construct those improvements, have them inspected by the county engineer and accepted, and then they can bond for what's called an infrastructure warranty bond, it's 10% of the replacement cost of that. It's held for one year to ensure that that infrastructure performs as expected, and then they can record their lots and start selling. If the developer wants to record their lots so that they can start selling before that infrastructure is in place, they have to bond for the value of that, those improvements. And we require the 100% of the value, the engineer's cost estimate, and 125% contingency. So 125% of the estimate of that infrastructure. And that's to ensure that the infrastructure can be completed in the event that the developer walks away or goes belly up or, you know, who knows, any number of potential outcomes. And then the county has that honey, and they can complete the infrastructure. But by going that route, a developer can record their lots and start selling them, either because there's demand or so that they can cash flow, or because, you know, many other, you know, reasons why a developer might want to go that route. And so it's not up to the county to decide which route a developer goes, but those are the only two routes you can go.
Okay. So regardless, we've got a plat to approve here, the resolution, so let's move on with our business.
And so my advice to the county is that you can, you can approve the final plat, but the developer cannot record their lots until the bonding that the county receives is reflective of how much infrastructure is completed versus how much needs to be completed.
And that's reflected in the resolution here?
It's reflected in your motion and in the staff recommendation.
Okay.
And in the resolution. How can we ensure that the county engineer, together in a plowway fashion, will approve the improvements? This could have been a hall that approved weeks ago, so the county engineer showed up one hour before this being started to inspect the property. Well, when you are ready for that to be inspected, we will... Three weeks, three weeks ago.
Okay. Well, let's, we've got a motion on the floor, so this discussion can happen outside of the meeting because it's not on the agenda. Any further discussion related to this item? Okay? All in favor? Motion passed unanimous, five to zero. Thank you. Item N is adopting proposed resolution approving the Sage Creek final plat located at 2811 South Highway 191. Mr. Levine?
Okay. So this is another final plat approval for a 108 unit condo development at 2811 South Highway 191. Property is eight acres and is a private, key condo development. Light gate is to be used for... Light gate is to be used for primarily overhead rent. That is a by right use in a highway commercial zone, yeah, into Sage Creek at Moab. And this is also an example of where the developer has chosen to start working on their required public improvements, but for financing reasons, they have asked to have a final plat approval and will not be able to record until that infrastructure is entirely complete or they bond for any incomplete infrastructure. And so that same, you know, recommendation to the council, which follows straight from state code, is included in this, this staff recommendation as well. The final construction plans and engineer's cost estimate has been reviewed by our engineer and other reviewing agencies have been approved. That includes the water, sewer, power, road, building, UDOT. And we've got a subdivision improvement agreement that spells out all the required improvements and the cost estimates associated with those. And so this, this application is also ready for approval with that condition that I noted before.
Thank you. Entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a proposed resolution approving the Sage Creek final plat located at 2811 South Highway 91.
What 91?
Sorry. 191. With the recordation of the final plat not occurring until all infrastructure improvements have been approved by the county engineer and authorized the chair to sign all associated documents.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Clapper. Do we have a second? Second made by Councilmember Paxman. Any discussion? See none. All in favors?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, Zachary. Item O, approving recommendations to the U.S. Forest Service regarding the forest plan revision process. Councilmember Wells, as I mentioned in my report, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Clapper, second made by Councilmember Halliday. So I had Bryony print for you this packet here. And in this packet, you will find a pamphlet that is a informational pamphlet that just walks you through its front and back, the different phases of the plan revision. So you'll see the last two years we've been in phase one, which is the assessment. We're now in phase two, which is plan development, which is slated for 2018 through 2022. On the back, you'll, you'll find some further information. The portion of the packet that has this text is, it starts at part 219 at the bottom, which is under planning, a national forest system land management planning. And so the federal government updated their planning process. And so the majority of that port, in 2012, so the majority of that portion of the packet just outlines that. And then finally, at the end of the packet, and most importantly, is a copy that I was able to get from another cooperating agency because I'm still not able to access the shared folder for cooperating agencies. But what this is, is a comment form that they're asking for. District Ranger Mike Dim informed me it doesn't have to come in this form, but what you will notice is at the top for commenting, please review the overview of the forest plan revision process document provided by the Nantai LaSalle National Forest prior to reviewing the draft desired conditions and objectives provided. It says a 12-page document, not including the appendices, provides the important contextual information about our approach and content selection that will assist in the review process. And so essentially, then under background where it outlines that this is what we're going to be able to review is only the first draft of chapter one, two, three, and four of the proposed plan, so on and so forth. And so it's important for us to view the proposed plan that's in the shared folder before we can comment on it. And so once I've gained access to that, and again, I had a call into the, the revision team today that's located out of Price to get access to that, I'll circulate the draft revision plan to council members so you have an opportunity to review it. And then under this comment form, whether we decide to, to implement our comments through this or standard letterhead, you can see they'd like, they want page number, paragraph, number of line number, et cetera. So we need to review the plan, the overview, which has not been released to the public yet first, and then provide them comments. And so, like I said, I'll make those things available to you all and hopefully we'll have some comments to them, you know, in the next couple of months, I would say. And again, they were gonna, the target to roll out the first draft plan to the public, I believe, was in November 19. That's on their website and the emails that are going around. But he mentioned it may be delayed December into 2019. And so regardless, we'll get our comments in. So far, it sounds like the city of Moab's contributed. A lot of their issues are related to water conservation. Access issues are going to be a big thing with beetle kill and, you know, the forest fires and, and whatnot. And so I'm sure we'll, you know, discuss some comments pertaining to that and also dispersed camping. And the mountain has seen, like everything, a large uptick in recreation and overlap between grazing permities and recreators and Geyser Pass area has really been big. So I'm looking forward to jumping in with District Ranger Mike Dim and kind of going through that. And everyone is, minus Aquorumism, is of course welcome to participate. So thank you for being willing to shelve that item. And is there any further discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item P, adopting proposed resolution related to a CPAC's commercial property assessed clean energy district local entity and participation agreement between Grand County and the Governor's Office of Energy Development postponed from July 18, 2018. Sponsor is Chairwoman McGann, who is not here.
I move to postpone agenda item P indefinitely.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Paxman, any discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item Q, approving volunteer appointments to district and county boards and commissions, cemetery maintenance district.
Yeah, we had a one applicant for one vacancy and it was from Norm Boyd. You know, Norm the barber?
Yep.
So his, he's the son of a former mayor. His, both his parents are buried in the cemetery out here and he's, seems invested and has a lot of interaction with other citizens through his work and seems like a great choice. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Norm Boyd, term expiring December 31, 2018, to serve on the cemetery maintenance board and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Okay, great. Motion made by Councilmember Clapper. Do we have a second? Second made by Councilmember Hawks. Any discussion?
Oh, just wondering why we're ending his term at the end of the year.
There was, someone is stepping down off the board and leaving a vacancy.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to have him on their long terms.
Yeah, I, I think, well, as long as he doesn't jump ship, I mean, we can...
He can, he can reapply and you can reappoint.
Yeah. That, that was just when the existing term was scheduled to end.
Okay. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Clapper. Moving on to the consent agenda, portion of tonight's agenda. Item R, ratifying the chair's signature on a building permit for a waiver of fees in the amount of $65.65 for the installation of charging stations for electric cars at the Moab Golf Course. Approving use of discretionary funds in the agreed upon amount of $2,500 to Southeastern Utah District Health Department as Grand County share of multi-agency support of the Moab Area Watershed Partnership Watershed Coordination Position. Item T, approving proposed independent contractor agreements with Jones and DeMille Engineering and with HoraX engineers to provide on-call contract engineering services. Would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Clapper to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hawks. Any discussion?
By Halliday.
Excuse me.
I do have a quick discussion.
Well, Hawks and Halliday.
On the independent contractor agreements for the two engineering firms, there is a request by one of them, and it would make sense to do this for both, to strike paragraph 19, which has to do with the proposal. And they've already submitted their proposal.
Okay. Give us a minute to review that.
Uh, the paragraph headings?
It's a number 19 paragraph, or sorry, I'm saying 19. I believe it's actually 29.
29?
Sorry.
That makes more sense.
Trying to do this by memory.
I'm okay with the amended, but is that a red line? Do we need a substitute motion as what's the easiest way to prove that?
We should probably get a substitute motion.
I agree.
So for the audience, it's about non-conforming terms and conditions. Just a quick paragraph that says, "A proposal that includes terms and conditions that do not conform, conform to the terms and conditions of this request for proposal is subject to rejection as non-responsive." It goes on to say, "Grand County reserves the right to permit the offer to withdraw non-conforming terms and conditions from this proposal prior to a determination by the county of nonresponsiveness based on the submission of non-conforming terms and conditions." It's all about the request for a proposal where this is the actual contract to do the work, so.
Is it, okay.
That is in our, that is in our boilerplate agreement, but we just never really noticed it and the, one of the engineering firms just thought it needed to not be in there. I agree.
I would make a motion to approve consent agendas items R and S as written.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Halliday. Any discussion? Councilmember Hawks.
Just a question. Can you, Ruth, maybe tell me the history of the $2,500 Southeast Utah District Health? Is that MOP, is that watershed coordinator position going to be housed in the health, the public health district then?
I think it already is.
It is? And we're just contributing to it? So that's in addition to the contribution we already make to the health district?
No, this is the contribution that you all kind of gave a head nod on, but we didn't have an action item for it.
Right. I understand that, but I also...
Oh, is it in addition to other contributions we already do?
The, the annual contribution.
Yes, it is.
And will it be rolled into the annual contribution eventually?
Good question, Donna.
I doubt that. I think that is an agreement for that.
Okay. Okay. So I wonder if this will come before us every year then as a separate item? Anyway, just curious.
And this, this is the same amount that the city had given the head nod to during that joint meeting?
Okay, we have...
I don't know if they got a bill like we did.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt items R and S in the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I would like to make a motion to approve consent agitum, item T with bullet point 29 struck from the agreement contract, agreement for contractors.
Okay.
And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Item 29 being non-conforming terms and conditions. Motion made by Councilmember Clapper. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Hawks. Discussion. See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
See none.
Thank you. Onto discussion items. We have calendar items and public notices. Bryony Hill, our council office coordinator.
For your August calendars, August 23, at 9 o'clock, the annual partnership, and that's at the Seers Museum. Also on the 23rd is fulfillment community that has been postponed.
Yes, has it been rescheduled or just postponed?
No, just this one is, no, yeah.
Thank you. It was May.
And August 29, the budget advisory board is going to be in the library. I think this was already mentioned earlier, but it's over at the library in the small conference room.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to put it on there or not, but as I mentioned, the travel council advisory board is meeting on the 28th at 3:00 p.m. to discuss their budget.
And for your September calendars, September 3, Labor Day, so the county offices will be closed. September 11, 11 o'clock, EDC Utah Annual Meeting, that is up until late.
What's EDC?
It's the Economic Development Corporation of Utah. On that, just real quick, did we make a switch to, Mary was the liaison and I may be, I think I may have gotten swapped onto that too, but I plan to attend that. Zachary has been hands-on as well.
September 19th and 20th is USA ACCC and that's in the URC Utah.
So that's, let me just say what that is. That's the, let's see if I can do it. Utah State Association of Councils, Commissions.
USAC.
Councils and county commissioners, something like that. I never think of it. But it is for county council members and commissioners.
And I'll add, I'm on their agenda to present on affordable housing in public lands for the USAC conference, so.
And the museum board meets on 19th, that 5:30.
Any other updates for September? Special events, August 27 through September 14, Moab Museum Festival. September 7th and 8th is Coko Kelly 100. September 19th through 23rd is Saturday, Lillia at the Airport. September 22nd is NICA High School Mount Vibe Race. September 22nd, 23rd is Central Tour. September 28th, 29th is Moab Fun Dose. And September 14th is Choco Bunny Calves.
Bryony, sorry, I just caught something. On the August calendar, they, the BLM Grand County Coordination Meeting was canceled last week and they rescheduled this week for this Thursday, August 23rd from 3:30 to 4:30 p.m. I'm not going to be able to attend that, Greg. Can you attend that? Okay. All right. Thanks, sorry.
When is that?
This Thursday, the 23rd from 3:30 to 4:30. Christina Price sent out just an invite today and I think they canceled last week because there's some issues that Bill Jackson wants to go over with them and that he didn't have his information ready last week.
Okay.
Board District Volunteer Vacancies, Historical Preservation Commission has one vacancy. Travel Council has two. We received six applications for that. Cemetery maintenance is also. Recreation District has one. And Transportation Special Service District has one. Right, you said that there are two.
Two of transportation.
So we see the other one.
One was the chair.
Right.
And I, the other one's not been filled, so it's just... And I, the other one's not in Philly, so it's vacant.
Is it a board member?
Yeah, it's a board, it's a board.
Okay. Um, I, I don't know where you got, I don't, yeah. No one let me know, so I just have in my records that there's more than vacancies. All right, and then I'll need to know who resigned, so...
I don't know.
We got that one.
I got that one. Who was the other one?
It was never Phil.
From the very beginning?
I don't know. I was just told by, by Ashley that they have those two vacancies.
Maybe...
We'll check into it. If something doesn't sound right.
Yeah. Hey, Bryony, sorry, did you say you, we had any applications for the REC district?
Uh, no, cannot.
Okay. And we, and we do have, um, how many applications do we have for the Moab Area Travel Council?
Uh, six.
Okay. So, that's covering the board.
And, um, I don't like coming out open for the opportunities.
Allow me. Do we need them read into the record, or is it...
It's helpful.
Uh, EMT Basic, part-time, closes September 30th. EMS, anything else that you need to know on that? EMS Paramedic, part-time, closes September 30th. Grand County Sheriff's Office Assistant Food Service Manager in the jail, closes September 30th. Sheriff Officer, Corrections Officer, closes September 30th. Sheriff's Patrol Deputy closes September 30th. Sheriff's Officer, Victim Advocate, closes September 30th. The Sheriff's Office Communication Dispatch closes September 30th. Library Maintenance Worker closes, closes August 24th. And Old Spanish Trail Arena Facilities Maintenance Tech closes September 30th.
Mr. Clapper, thank you very much.
Not as good as you.
Bryony, would you like him to do that every time now? Thank you. Okay, um, we're moving on to our public hearings, uh, portion. I don't have the little card with me that, where I read to the public what the rules of the public hearing are. Would you mind helping me out?
Oh, I think, um, if someone from the public would like to speak, they can have up to three minutes.
Okay.
Um, we do want input. This is for the public. That's about it.
Okay, and then, but as far as this, the public comment period being open for...
Oh, right, right. Until the Wednesday before the next council meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
So, this, this public hear, the public comment period on this item will be open until, uh, the Wednesday before the next council meeting? Did I say that right?
We, we might could even go longer, depending on the input, because we still need legal review, actually.
Okay, so the title of, um, the public hearing is Item V on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing to hear public comment on proposed ordinance regarding minimum standards and rules and regulations for operations at Canyon Lansfield Airport, presented by Judd Hill, our airport director.
Hi, thank you. Uh, minimum standards and rules and regulations. We're kind of reminding them, but, uh, generally speaking, two different documents, but all done simultaneously. Uh, the FAA has an advisory circular that specifies the minimum standards, and it says, "This advisory circular provides basic information relating to FAA's recommendation of commercial minimum standards and related policies. Although minimum standards are optional, the FAA highly recommends their use and implementation as a means to minimize the potential for violations of federal obligations of federally obligated airports." That's us. Minimum standards are basically a set of rules that define commercial operations at an airport, uh, any number of type of commercial operation. Rules and regulations can be considered as guidelines for rules for every airport user, whether you are an FBO, a flight tour operator, skydiving, a glider company, uh, something like that, or if you are in general aviation. Uh, I started back in the fall of 2014, and I actually just, I've been going through old agendas, and the first time I brought the idea of putting minimum standards to the airport board was, I think, December 14th, or, yeah, December 2014 meeting, the first time we had minimum standards on an agenda, as an agenda item. And total, we've had 22 different agendas over the last four years with minimum standards on them, uh, working towards creating this type of document. Um, I haven't gotten a, gotten some feedback, not a lot, but, uh, finally, let's push it forward, and then maybe it's kind of like, your final term paper's not ready to get due, and you'll actually sit down and probably give us good feedback. It's one of those that, they are basically designed the way I look at them as very useful for the airport, but also useful for the, uh, airport tenants, whether they be business or private. Uh, and it's kind of guidelines that will provide a safe, secure, um, environment there for aviation activities, um, as well as providing guidelines so that different businesses will be treated equally or as equally as possible. Um, so, to that end, they took the most recent version, it's gone back and forth amongst the airport board members, uh, multiple times, and got feedback, incorporated those, and rewritten, and, uh, and allowed us to go around and said, "All right, let's go forward, even though they're not perfect, let's go forward, and then we can get the feedback." Because we haven't gotten, we've gotten some feedback from airport tenants, but not a lot, because I think it's, "Oh, I'll get to it sometime down the line." Well, four years later, we're down the line. So, let's make this happen. Um, my thoughts on the standard is that you, the Wednesday beforehand, the way I look at this document is that I think it would be beneficial to say, "Hey, we have three weeks for people to get comment, and now you have your term paper deadline of when you're gonna get stuff back, and then we can sit down and go through it." Now, the basis is, like I said, to make it an even playing field for everyone out there, but also, it's a document that provides security for the accountant, for the airport's monthly honor, for, there are certain things that we want to make sure were protected against liability, um, and that's kind of what this kind of document can be for. So, what I'm hoping will happen, I've spoken with all of the businesses, at least in some of the private tenants that I've been able to, uh, just catch and pass, but all the major businesses out there, um, saying, "Hey, this is actually happening, we haven't talked about it in four years." It's there, you really should get online and download it and read it. Maybe pay especially mindful to those that are more trained to your particular interest of the airport. So, I definitely like having that specific deadline of when those are done, but, you know, I first brought this up December 1st, 2014, making it at the September 1st or September 15th, uh, council meeting, I don't think is as critical as making sure everyone's on board. Everyone may not like everything in it, but at least they'll know what's in it. So, the thought is to generate this set of rules, and then it has been reviewed by the FAA before, it's been reviewed by our, uh, engineers to make sure that, from the FAA's perspective, is everything legal, and they say yes, at least where it's at now. Buying, sending it back to them, even if there's some significant changes that might, um, affect our grant assurances, certain, it's just that grant assurances are a list of things we have to do so that we can get federal grants. So, it, this has been reviewed by the FAA, and they said, "Okay, we've got to violate any federal laws, and these are okay to adopt, because they are there." Doesn't mean that they can't be improved better, and everyone's like, "Well, I didn't know anything about it." Well, I mean, you've missed 22 of the last, 22 of the last 46 council, or airport board meetings haven't had this on the agenda, so, um, I think there's, there has been opportunity, but it's one where I'm definitely willing to make sure there's more opportunity.
Okay. Well, I, I think you've definitely, I mean, you got everyone's attention now that the, uh, public hearing has popped up on the agenda, and, um, I've gotten a few emails from constituents as far as, uh, and they just came in today as far as, "Hey, here's some notes regarding the plan." And so, I do think having a, you know, not adopting this tonight and giving them, so, well, three, well, would be a good thing to do appropriate. Three weeks that you're mentioning, is that, that's our next council meeting? Is that why you've roughly...
The next one is actually in like, 10 or 12 days.
Yeah, yeah.
14 days from now.
Okay, so, okay, so early September.
I think that it's possible we'll get substantial feedback, because all of a sudden, "Oh, my gosh, this is actually happening."
Yeah, I think so.
And I'm fine giving the time to make that happen, and to review those and possibly incorporate, and if need be, like I said, send it back to FAA, send it, uh, through the legal review from the local side as well. I mean, these are something that, out of the 535 commercial airports in the U.S., we're pretty much the only one without them.
Okay. So, the three-week time period that you suggested, is there any rhyme or reason for that, or...
It's enough that anyone who wants to comment, you can read five pages a night, you get through this and have plenty of time to absorb and make comments.
So, then we would move, then that would put us in a position to adopt this at the next council meeting, following that, or...
Potentially.
Depending on how much...
I mean, it's one where it could, like I said, it could go so far if there's enough comments that it may take me, um, weeks to look at it. I mean, it's one where, a lot of times, minimum standards are done by consultants, but that's usually somewhere in the 20,000 to 50,000 dollar range to write those up. I wrote these myself. What I did was I re-referenced 20 different airports and tried to figure out what aspects of their standards could relate to ours, uh, just because no airport is the same. We have skydiving, but there's only four airports in the nation that are commercial airports that have skydiving. We have helicopter tours. There are tons of airports that don't even do helicopters. We've got an FBO, which every airport has, but not air tours. Um, you know, there's just so many different, the same in aviation, you see one airport, once you see an airport, you see one airport.
Okay. So, if I may, then we'll set the public hearing to come to a close at September 11th, 2018. Is that, that would be three weeks from tonight?
Or, actually, the 12th, Wednesday at 5:00 is usually what we do, and that would be...
Okay.
That would be the Wednesday before that September 18th meeting. However, we won't have had any legal review. I mean, we've had FAA review, which is substantial, and that will help our county attorney's office, but...
We don't need a motion.
They're gonna need some time. So, there's not a, a magic adoption date at this point, unless you all wanted to adopt it prior, you know, pending legal review.
My perspective is, whether it is September or January 1st, either something that should have happened a decade ago, and the matter of whether it's a couple more weeks or another month, I don't think is going to be...
Okay.
I agree.
So, that's understood. So, we'll set the, so then, we don't need a motion to, uh, so, the public hearing will run through Wednesday, the 12th, September 12th, and then, depending on, uh, the amount of comments, then we'll establish a process from there to get it adopted, whether that's two months, one month, two weeks, depending on that, so, that sounds good.
Thank you. And if I could just add, we need those comments to come into our office. You're gonna need them, but we'll coordinate with you. So, that's council@grandcountyutah.net.
Okay.
Where you can drop them by.
Do you have a comment, uh, Rory?
Well, I was gonna say, um, wondered if we oughta maybe...
Go ahead, Rory.
I'm sorry, go ahead. What was...
I don't know. We'll get to, go ahead, finish.
I was just gonna say, I wonder if we oughta, I wonder if we wanted to bring this up at the airport board meeting and put it on the our agenda to just have a comment session there, too?
We, we definitely still fall in because our next airport board... Well, in that case, actually, I, I do think that's a great idea. However, because of the Labor Day holiday, our next airport board meeting is September 10th. That only gives two days. Um, perhaps pushing it to the 19th would give them 10 days after the 23rd, I'm probably at an airport board meeting.
Yeah. Okay, fine with me. So, the, the public hearing will run through September 19th, Wednesday, September 19th, 2018? Okay. Any further comments? Okay, thank you, Judd. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Judd.
Okay, um, we'll move on to closed session. I'll entertain a motion, uh, to move into closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property.
Summary.
Motion made by Councilmember Hawks.
Second.
Second by Rory Paxman. We'll move into closed session. Thank you all.
Sure.
I can do it. I will. You know, they put them in here.
That's good. Fucking brain, man.